So good to be here. Just wanted to lead us.
I don't think it's on.
No, I know what.
Pull it up.
No, but one. I said he'll say. Hey, alright. Just wanted to lead us in a quick word of prayer today. We can. Lord Jesus, we thank you today for the wisdom that's in this room. We thank you, God, for the influence that's in this room, the inspiration that's in this room today. God, we pray for special guidance tonight for this meeting and for this school board in this county. God, so much responsibility is on these leaders. And God, we pray, God, for your special favor to be upon them, your wisdom, your guidance tonight. Bless them in a special way and their families. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you for our words of encouragement from Cam Jones, who is the high school pastor at North Cleveland Church of God. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education regular meeting for May the 18th, 2023. I would like to recognize a couple of our commissioners that we have in attendance, which is our education chair, Ms. Cindy Slater, and also sixth district commissioner, Mr. Tommy Lefford. At this time, we will do a pledge to be led by Mr. Teddy Bryson.
Pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America. Nancy, Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in every gene, blessed is our all.
Good job, Nancy.
Thank you. We also have Nancy again with us on the phone, so you will hear her throughout the night as well. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and we have had a change to the agenda. We are going to remove item number 10, I believe it is, because those people are out of town. So I would like to get a motion, unless anyone has anything else, to pull from the consent agenda, approving the agenda minus item number 10.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, minus number 10.
I second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Are there any discussions? If not, Miranda, will you please call the rule?
Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Ms. Gouens?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Dr. Lovinggood?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is persons requesting to address the board on agenda items. We have had three people sign up to address the board tonight. I will call each of you up individually in the order that you signed up. Pursuant to Board Policy 1.401, each person wishing to address the board must agree to the following statement prior to addressing the board. I'm going to read the statement once, I don't have to repeat it three times, and then when you come up, I will just ask for your acknowledgement as to if you agree to this statement. So, it is, "The board wishes to hear the opinion of interested parties on matters pertaining to business of the board. The opportunity to address the board shall not be used to address any issue regarding a student or lodge a complaint against an employee of the school system. All comments shall be restricted to the scope of the agenda item and shall not address topics outside the board's meeting agenda. Failure to adhere to the rules of the board shall result in the chair terminating the remarks of the individual. Individuals speaking to the board shall address remarks to the chair and may direct questions to individual board members or staff members only upon approval of the chair. Each person speaking shall state his or her name, address, and the agenda item for comment. The chair shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the board rules. Members of the board or the director of schools may have the privilege of asking questions of any person who addresses the board. The chair may recognize individuals not on the agenda for remarks to the board if he or she determines that such is in the public interest. A majority vote of the members present can overrule the decision of the chair. Individuals desiring additional information about any item on the agenda shall direct such inquiries to the office of the director of schools." So the first person to sign up is Mr. Mike Griffin.
Good evening.
Mr. Griffin, do you agree to the statement I just read?
I do, I agree.
You'll state your name and your address and the agenda item.
Okay, I'm Mike Griffin. My address is 350 Centenary Avenue Northwest, Cleveland 37311. And I think it's item seven?
Yes.
Is that right?
That's what she wrote.
So I'm here mainly just to show my support and say a few things about Dr. Linda Cash, and I guess this is in regards to her review, so to speak. But I've known Dr. Cash really since she got here, and more through serving on other boards with her and through Rotary. But then I got to know her really well, starting in June of 19, when I became the president of the Cleveland Bradley Chamber of Commerce. And I was told, I think probably within a week or two after taking that job, that I was going to be on the PI committee. And I had no idea, I knew about the PI Center and what that was and what it was going to be, and that it was still really in a formulated stage right then. But I got to work very closely with not only Dr. Cash, but with the team, the PI team. And I have seen her exhibit, what did the governor call you, Bulldog? She doesn't take no for an answer, she's fought for that, and I am so proud of where that has led. And we have, I think the best example of what the PI Center has done, I know probably everybody in the room has heard about the SK Foods announcement, and that group, they visited here seven times, and they visited the PI Center, I believe, three times. And each time they came, they brought more people from the team. The last time they were here, they brought the president, head of human resources, and they wanted to meet with us, they wanted to talk to us, but they couldn't wait to get to the PI Center. And I can tell you without a doubt, that had such an effect on them choosing Cleveland over, at one time, we were like on the list of top 10, and then it got down to top 5, top 3, then we're down between us and pretty much South Carolina. They chose Cleveland, Tennessee, because of the innovation, the fact that we were being so proactive about training this workforce. And it's key, and we've got more, everybody here about the way the solutions they have to be, and they're excited about the PI Center as well. And I could just tell you, I really feel like I've been friends with Dr. Cash, but heard of the tenacity and heard, don't say, don't take no for an answer, attitude, can't do attitude, is the difference, because I would compare it to Dr. Bill Seymour and the Health and Science Building of Cleveland State, and I'm the chairman of that foundation. And if it wasn't for Dr. Bill Seymour, I truly believe that building would not be there today, because that was his vision, and he made it happen, and I feel the same way about the PI Center. Because I believe that started almost day one, when you set foot in Cleveland. And I just want to say, it's an honor to work with you and to work with your team, and your team thanks so much of you, and it works up right up here.
Thank you, thank you. The next person to sign up is Mr. Steve Wright. Mr. Wright, do you agree to this statement I read? If you will, please state your name, address, and your agenda item.
It's item number 7, my name is Steve Wright, 8022 Mouse Street, 4037312. And I'm here, like I said, just telling the item, number 7, to mostly, with representing the company I work for, Bradley School Construction Company, to tell y'all thank you, because you run a really good school system. I know it's not easy, and I think part of it, you're still right there beside you. And there's a couple of things in particular that stand out, the way that our business has been a part of the school system. In 2017, we had a speaker come to town worried about opioid addictions. And we went through it, had several, several people of the community who came together, formed a group, and wanted to try to figure out how to help. And that led to the formation of ATS The Bridge, and Dr. Cash was the first person to join the Bradley County School System, the first group to let us into their school systems, as young as fifth graders, I think, at the time, fifth through high school. And in the pre-seeding, everybody hears that as, I didn't go to college. We've spoken, I believe they've spoken to about 50,000 students, and I will bet you half of them are in Bradley County School Systems. But that opening that door has changed, I believe it's changed life with a message of positive hope and information that arm these kids about what the decisions they're really making. And we try to give them good values and teach them the importance of the decisions they make, and they have, you know, both eternal and consequences. So that's number one, we thank you, thank you for that, we appreciate you, you started that follow-up. And the obvious thing is the PI Center. You know, we've been so blessed to, you know, knowing Dr. Cash through the ATS The Bridge startup, it wasn't long, I get asked to come over to American Union. I get over there in the back of the halfway, the darts back there, Dr. Cash tells me and she, I'm pretty sure our last, Brittany, Albert, great team, that she can identify, or they can identify, the students that aren't going to college by the time they're in sophomore year, I believe, is what she said. And that was like music to my ears, I said, can you share them with, I mean, if we didn't get access to those children that are in college, now we have so many great jobs that you can't get access to kids. So I, you know, we signed up that day, that day, so I'm in, whatever, tell me what to do next, and it's been a long time, a long struggle, anyway, but it's, it is, I think that will ultimately change more lives than maybe even than the ATS stuff does. But, you know, there are so many kids out there, right now, we're at 60% of those who went through the program over the last three years, we did a couple of years before we got into the building, and I think there's 28 right now, people on the payroll that we would not have as employees if it wasn't for that system. And these kids are making good money, you know, they have access, opportunities, and they're doing a great program, so that's got to change lives. And the most refreshing part of that to me was to hear a professional educator just saying that there is life without a four-year degree. And not that I have anything against it, there's a time and place for everything, but it's not very reliable, and we need to be sure we serve, these exact words, we are not serving those that are in need of help. And thank you for that, I thank y'all for supporting and allowing, and I appreciate y'all for speaking.
Thank you. Thank you. The last person to sign up is Mr. Mitchell Simpson. Mr. Simpson, do you agree to the statement I read earlier?
Yes.
Thank you, if you'll state your name, address, and the agenda item.
My name is Mitchell Simpson, I live on 1845 Rapid Valley Road, Cleveland, Tennessee, 37322, and I believe it is item number 7. So what I'm here to talk about tonight is simply to be talking about what we appreciate about Dr. Cash, what we appreciate about Bradley County Schools. I had a blessing growing up here in Bradley County, I moved off for a few years to go to college when I came back, and, you know, the great thing about Bradley County was it equipped a DTS coach, the first Tennessee city, to get the faculty to sit with you and go to public school, do that, come back and get a really good job and make a good living for my family, that's a real blessing. Most people can't say that. And I've got four kids today. My four kids are in Bradley County School, minus one, he goes in next year. So I'm going to be here for a long time. My kids are graduated 2028, 2031, 2033, and 2036, so I'm going to be here for a long time. And the thing that I'm curious about with what I see today in Bradley County Schools is it's real leadership, and it allows our kids to have the same opportunities that I have. You know, I thought the school system was great, when I went through it, I was really appreciative of it, but what I see today is I see more opportunities for the kids, I see better opportunities for the kids, and I feel confident that my four kids are going to be equipped, be able to do whatever they want to in their life. You know, I hope that they take the same path that I do, can't force them to do that, but I see that they're going to have a good path, be able to have a good living, whether they decide to go and get a four-year degree, or if they decide to go and do the skilled trade like Mr. Wright talked about, they're going to have that opportunity. And you know, folks, everywhere in the state of Tennessee, we don't have that opportunity today, and I think it's a blessing that the school system has done that. I've seen lives changed from that, as Steve Wright spoke about, we have twenty-some odd individuals that have gone through that program today. So that's a blessing, that's a blessing. So we're making a difference, be it if you're going vocational route, if you're going to college, we're making a difference, and that's what matters. We're not forgetting any kids, we're taking care of the kids. So with that said, another thing I'd like to point out is, you know, throughout the years with all my kids, programs, and things that they're involved in, Dr. Cash, I have seen you personally take time out and send you personally talk to each one of those kids, be it whatever it is, you stop, you take a minute, and you talk to them. And that matters, that matters, whether it's a bank concert, an athletic event, whether it's a science fair, I've seen you stop and try to talk to them whenever you can and try to make an impact on those kids. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, the next item on our agenda is item number six, the Director of Schools Report, Dr. Cash.
A couple of things. First, let me say thank you to our guests and our speakers, very humbling for me, and I appreciate that. And I won't tell the other stories about things that were said, but.
The things that can't be said.
The things that can't be said, but really, I appreciate that, that means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot to the board to hear that you appreciate the work that we do. We do need to shout out that Walker Valley is hosting the substate baseball game right now, actually, as we speak, so we're hoping to be at the state level at Walker Valley. And Okoye Middle School's in the top four in the state in baseball, and they play tomorrow, I believe they play tomorrow, so those are a shout out for both those schools. And then I do want to add that this week, we had two of our, two more of our schools that earned the STEAM designation, and STEAM is, of course, including the art for Ms. Nancy Kayson. And that is designated for Prospect Elementary and Walker Valley High School, so we added those two. And then the last thing that I will bring up in this month of May for our theme, the May is STEM, and we had STEM on the Greenway last Saturday, is that right? Saturday before, Saturday before, and I believe it was the biggest and the best we've had, it was held at the PI Center, and I've been told that that's where we need to have it from here on out. So I just want to give a shout out to everybody who participated in that, over 400 children came through that event, and so it was really fabulous. So I appreciate the work that our team and teachers and administrators did on pulling that together, and I don't know if Ms. Heather Hayes is here tonight, is she here? She and her team are really the planners and the organizers behind that, everybody else pitches in, but I wanted to thank all those leaders that helped do that. So, and now we're going to see our theme for May, Reach Higher, STEM.
thinking in all students. STEM is focused on building critical and creative thinking and analysis skills by addressing how students view and experience the world around them. STEM education provides students so many authentic learning opportunities that they can then use their learning in an authentic way, which I think is what is most important when it comes to education, because that's what we're developing students for, is for their future.
STEM really allows our students to dream, and gives them the ability to take, see what's been planted in them from their regular day curriculum and apply that to hands-on learning.
STEM education gets to every learner, no matter of their ability level, their interests, it gets them dug into what they're learning, and so that's why STEM education is such a great opportunity for all students and for all learners. It makes the learning relevant.
So our students can really, what we like to say, take a K to J kindergarten to job, and they get their foundation with STEM, and then as they grow older, gives them the ability to apply those things.
In the STEM classroom, robust partnerships reach beyond the walls of the school to include higher education and business partners in real-world lessons.
Our business and industry partnerships are essential in making STEM come to life in Bradley County. From the PI Innovation Center to STEM on the Greenway, Family STEM Nights, and CTE in the classroom, business partnerships are key to the success of STEM education.
This allows our community partners to be involved in our schools, and it's not just a monetary transaction that we have with them, you know, they're able to come into the schools and use their knowledge to work with our students.
When we think about 21st century skills and what the workforce is needing and demanding, they need those students who can critically think, who can persevere, who can work with others, who can problem solve, and STEM education truly does that for our students in developing those right skills.
Creativity, critical thinking, inquiry, and problem solving. Bradley County Schools is reaching higher with STEM education.
I'd like, if Ms. Beatty would just like to tell one great thing that's happening right now at Walker Valley, because I think that's important for us to recognize, one of our own teachers, he is actually retiring, but right now, Ms. Beatty, if you want to share, Mr. Dillon?
Yes, Harry Dillon will be throwing out the first pitch tonight, I guess he has already done that at Walker Valley. And of course, Harry has had some health issues, he is back home, he is at the, he was at the retirement party, he is up at Walker Valley, so we're very excited about that. But Harry was a baseball player at Charleston High School, as well as a football player, and has been involved with the community for an extended period of time, so congratulations, Harry.
Thank you, thank you, that's all for my report tonight, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cash. The next item on the agenda is item number seven, the Director of Schools Evaluation. Pursuant to Board Policy, the Director of Schools Contract and Tennessee State Law, the board must evaluate the director's performance on an annual basis to be completed no later than June the 30th of each calendar year. As a part of the evaluation process, Dr. Cash completes a self-evaluation. The board was provided with her self-evaluation on April the 24th, at which time each board member completed an individual evaluation on Dr. Cash's performance. After all evaluations were submitted, each board member met with Dr. Cash individually to go over their evaluation with her. After all meetings are complete, the scores from all board members are tallied to combine, for a combined total, and then presented at this board meeting. So attached to your agenda, you have the results of this board's evaluation for Dr. Cash. The evaluation is comprised of seven different standards, and the results of the board's evaluation are as follows. For standard one, the vision of learning, she received a 4.58. Standard two, the school culture and instructional program, she received a 4.61. Standard three, management and operations, a 4.58. Standard four, collaboration with families and community, a 4.59. Standard number five, integrity, fairness, and ethics, a 4.69. Standard number six, political, social, and cultural context, a 4.64. And standard number seven, superintendent board relationship context, a 4.63, for a combined overall score of 4.62. So at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to accept the Director of Schools' evaluation, and then we can open the floor up for discussion.
I make a motion to accept this.
I have a motion by Dr. Lovinggood, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
I've got a second by Ms. Gouens. Alright, I'll open the floor up for any discussions regarding her evaluation.
I would just like to say that I appreciate Dr. Cash and her vision for Bradley County Schools, as we have had three gentlemen here tonight talking about her impact. Also, when you have been an employee of this district, unfortunately, or maybe fortunately for Dr. Cash, I was not on the staff here, but I have watched the system grow, and I have watched the academic progress of our students, and being the grandparent of a student in the district, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Linda Cash.
Are there any more comments or discussions?
I had the privilege of knowing Dr. Cash for a long time, in fact, we were in Sumter County together, and I got the privilege of moving from Sumter County about the same time back, I got to come home, and this became her new home, and one thing I've always respected about Dr. Linda Cash was her care for people. And she, at Sumter County, really had an impact in students' lives, and cared for the community, and there's never a doubt that Dr. Cash cares about the holistic education of the students. If you look at Mr. Wright and Mr. Simpson, just all three of the gentlemen's comments, and just what happens to education, holistic education, what I would say, it goes back to the valedictorian statement that she made at Bradley High School, is how much you learn from the hidden curriculum in school. And Dr. Cash is aware of the holistic education of students, she cares about kids, and she has a huge concern about our community, and it's a privilege to be able to work with you.
Thank you. Mr. Bryson?
I was elected to the board like six years ago, and Dr. Cash had just come on board. I hate to say I wasn't wanting to call her to come here, or supported her to come here, I did not know her, and I told her that when she came about her evaluation. I said, "Dr. Cash, if you'll just wait, it'll be good to know you, you'll get a fire evaluation," but she waited, and she did, and I've been through six now, Director of Schools, seven tenants, one of them was my best friend in the world, one of them was my other good friend, and for those of you who've lived in Cleveland a long time, Bill Walker hired me, good a man, as you'll ever know. All these people were good, Bob Taylor was excellent, David Holloway, and John, they were all good. But I believe I can say, after forty-seven years in education, I taught, everyone great knows, I was a principal, and I've been a board member, and Dr. Cash is as good as I've ever been. And when we go to state meetings, they always refer to her as an expert, other systems won't talk to her, other systems would like to have her, and I'm telling you, when you go somewhere with her, you're walking with the best, and it makes you look good, it makes you feel good, and I'm proud to say she's a Director of Schools for our county, and I wish her well, and hope she stays forever, if she wants to.
Are there any other comments? If not, I would just like to read just a couple of the comments that were in her evaluation, one of which said, "Dr. Cash promotes quality instruction, obtains, and effectively uses ..."
resources, and provides strong leadership." Another one is, "Dr. Cash has shown commitment to improving the district by recruiting highly-qualified teachers and ensuring she has a strong administrative team with high expectations. She is not afraid of making hard decisions necessary if she feels that it is in the best interest of children." Another one is, "Our schools are safe and work very efficiently. Safety of schools is very important and addressed on a daily basis." And then, let's see, one more I wanted to read here. "It's Dr. Cash's efforts and achievement for Bradley County Schools are commendable. She is a visionary leader with clear expectations about what is best for the students' academic and safety needs. Her accomplishments, time, and effort are appreciated." And then the last one is, "Dr. Cash is a great lady. She does a great job as the Director of Schools in Bradley County, and it is a privilege to get to work with her." So I think it's safe to say that, you know, she's done an exceptional job since she's been here, and we're very glad that she's here with us. If there are no other comments, then I will ask Miranda DeCollo.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Dr. Lovinggood?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, no question passed.
The next item on the agenda is the Director of Schools Contract. At the same time each year, following the presentation of the Board's evaluation on the Director, we also review the contract. Pursuant to state law, a Director's contract cannot exceed four years. However, each year, the Board has the option to extend the contract of the Director by one year to maintain the four years allowed by law. So at this time, I will entertain a motion on the Director of Schools Contract.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that Bradley County Board of Education extend Dr. Cash's contract from July 1, '23 to June 30, '27, and I hope the Board would support that. I think she's great, and she's just the best.
Okay. All right, I've got a motion by Mr. Robinson, and a second by Ms. Kayson. Are there any discussions?
Madam Chair, that is a one-year extension, correct?
Yes, I had to go back and look at the data. Yes, that is a one-year extension, correct.
Well, that's as long as we can do.
That's correct, yes.
Can I ask one question on that? I think I understand this, I think you explained this to me the last time I asked you, Dr. Cash. So if you go somewhere, which we're hoping you don't go somewhere, so we don't have to, we don't have to pay that contract.
If she leaves, then no, we do not. Are there any more discussions? If not, Miranda, will you please call the row?
Yes, Ms. Kayson?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Lovinggood?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Seven, yes, zero, no question passed.
Thank you.
Madam Chair? First off, I'm really humbled. Do y'all want to have your whole thing done public like this? Thank you. I just want to say that it is my privilege and my pleasure to be here in this county and to see the work that happens and the support that we get from the Board. But I want everybody to understand, I don't do this job alone. All the people that you see sitting out there, our parents, everybody that hits the schools, this Board, working together with the community is what makes us good. It's just, I have the privilege of leading it, which makes me a very, I know I shouldn't be proud, but it does make me very proud to work with each and every one of you. Everybody from, I can't imagine, from my bus drivers to my custodians, everybody pulling together is what makes us great. It's not me. Again, I just have the privilege of leading and blessed to be here. But, you know, one of the best things that you said tonight was that you saw me speak to kids, because that warms my heart. So, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is item number nine, Skills USA Recognition. Ms. Arlette Robinson?
Speaking of celebration, reaching higher in students. So on the agenda, it says Skills USA, but we'd like to honor all of our CTSO. CTSO stands for Career Technical Student Organization, and we're going to have them all come in, as we may have to.
Really tall. Yeah, did you say CTS?
Career Technical Student Organization. Tonight, we're celebrating all, well, they're not all here, but we're celebrating our state medalists. Every one of these students won a medal, a first, second, or third place medal at Skills USA, DECA. Are those the only ones we had up tonight? We had one at HOSA as well, and FFA has had several. We celebrated Bradley's FFA a little bit back. But this is our busy season for CTE, and all of our students have the opportunity to participate in a career and technical student organization, from DECA, Skills USA, HOSA, FFA.
I'm sorry, sorry.
And FCCLA. And so tonight, we would just like to honor them. What I would like to do is let their advisor talk just a bit about their students, what they competed in, and then their medals. So I'm going to start with our Pi Center, because they're brand-new, and we have two students from, we have two students from Bradley Central that represented Bradley and the Pi Center. And so, Mr. Kealan, if you would like to introduce our Pi ambassadors.
So we have Caleb White here and Aiden Chris. They competed in the Megatronics. The first time going, they got kills, so I mean, I'm really proud of these guys. I was told from some of my officers at Skills USA, our boys were leaps above the rest of the crowd, so I am so stoked on that, but yeah.
We're going to let Mr. Gwen Schreuer speak about his win, which is a few years in a row here. So I'm going to let you talk, Mr. Schreuer, about your students that you have with us today.
We take it very seriously. I think this is something that students stick with them, energizes their platform for opportunities in the future. And we had three different categories that we placed in our before that we competed in. Alex and Marissa competed in PSA and placed third. The boys right here, Trevor, Brandon, and Kayden, were in the news competition. And then the one lone survivor that could make it tonight, Amber, was part of the team that won another championship. This makes seven in a row.
Wow, it's amazing.
We go to Nationals next month. Like I said, this is not kind of a light entertainment vacation. We really push objectively, what can they do to be something special, and they take it on very seriously. Thank you so much for supporting us.
Thank you.
So with that being said, if any of you have loose change in your pocket or cash, this team and that team will be going to Nationals in June. We also have, I'm going to get Mr. Usaka up next.
I'm going to step up here. We saw Walker Valley High School, Skills USA. I would consider myself, I don't want to step on toes, probably the senior advisor for Skills USA at Walker Valley. We took a total of sixty-six students to Walker, to Skills USA State, which is pretty astounding, and it is, literally, too many competitions to list. We competed in thirty different competitions, and as a group, we medaled in thirteen of those. Yeah, it was a fantastic showing. We were, we are eligible for Nationals in six different competitions. We are taking one, two, three total. I'm going to let the other speak about theirs, but I'm also taking these two from Bradley with me as well. And so we're, yeah, money, we need money, definitely. But we always, we're looking at Walker Valley, we're always looking to grow the program, because it is an amazing experience for them to demonstrate workplace skills, soft skills, all the things they get to learn in there is pretty fantastic. So next year, we're shooting for seventy-five. We'll see if that works or not, but thank you for your support, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Evers is one of our neighbor teachers to Skills USA, and he is in audio and visual production, and all that he talks about are students.
So like Ms. Arlette said, this is my second year, and we actually took, I took four teams to Skills USA. I have Jimbo Canada back here in the back right here, Lily Cruz Rogers, go ahead and raise your hand.
Slide up.
Yeah. And then Justice Brackett. They're on my digital cinema team, and they placed gold at State. And then I also took, let's see, I took Sarah Viegas, you want to take a step forward? Noah Birdwell and Cameron Clark is my TV video production team, and they placed gold as well. I took Justin Martin, Kayden Payne, and Jake Shaw. They also couldn't be here tonight, but Justin showed up. He got silver in audio production. And then I had my news broadcast team, which had one survivor here, me, Fanzler, Danica Donnez, Keller Cook, and Tommy Coleman, and they placed bronze in State.
I'm so proud of y'all, thank you.
Very, very excited to be here.
So the next one, I'm getting really embarrassed, Mr. Evers, if you'll come up. Right out of the gate, the first year he has Skills USA, right? First year?
Yes.
He went second in the nation with his students.
Wow, wow.
Second in the nation. He is a rock star.
I have rock star students.
He is a rock star instructor to rock star students, and he had some students go as well. Would you like to explain them?
Yeah, I'd like to introduce you to Joshua Sauser. Joshua is a sophomore, and as a sophomore, he led a mock trial team for our first time competing in that competition from Walker Valley, and they brought home silver, so I thought that was very well. Joshua is, you know, his intelligence, I'm not even sure if I understand it yet, he's a future law school guy, and he's sharp as a tack. The other person is Taylor Owens. Taylor just recently graduated. He'll start Cleveland State in the fall. He has a calling on his life for public service, and he knew it early. And he won silver as a junior in the criminal justice competition, and then this year, as a senior, brought home gold. He takes on the role of a police officer there and goes into an unwinnable scenario, but his, you know, his demeanor and his ability, he's bomb-proof, guys. That really helped him, so we're very proud of him. So look for him in the future, he'll attend Cleveland State, and then he'll go to work somewhere local. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Are you going to introduce? Just the ones that I have here? I apologize, guys, I wouldn't take it about. Sorry. Yeah, so I do have some here, I have a few that survived, the fact that a lot of them are seniors and they're in Panama City, I believe. So first, I'm going to take a second, Orlando Hooks, he's actually not mine, he belongs to Coach Morris, Coach Morris can't be here, but, so we took him with us, and he won bronze in Internet Working Communication, something, something, something like that, right? Okay, good, good, good. Orlando Hooks. And then I have a few of mine behind us, so we have Jaden Boe, and they took gold in Showcase in the, man, I'm drawing a blank. Was it Industrial Showcase? Yes, I am so sorry. Who else do we have? We have some of our Quiz Bowl people here, Lance Sims, and this is a fun story, Lance Sims, yes, and Brendan Guppy. They're two of five of that team, and it's a fun story, because they competed last year as well in Quiz Bowl and did not place, and this year, they came in with silver. They're going to go back again next year, and they're promising me gold, we'll see if, we'll see what happens. We'll see what happens. And who else do I have? I have my Additive Manufacturing Team, Maxwell Webb, and Zekardan. Additive Manufacturing, which is a great skill that they learned, which is basically 3D printing in a nutshell, and they took silver in that.
Good job.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bell? Another skills USA, and I would also like to recognize DECA. We have Mr. Tyler Webb with us tonight, and I just have to brag on this DECA group from Walker Valley this year. They have just been amazing the whole time that they've been here, this group of seniors. Out of our ten finalists for CTE Student of the Year, three of them were DECA students. And when we did the interviews for Student of the Year, they could not be with us because they were representing us in international DECA competition in Orlando. And so I wanted, I wanted Mr. Webb to come and talk about his students, talk about what they had this year, and let us celebrate them as well.
So I'm actually good transitioning between Skills and DECA, because Mr. Sack actually asked me this year to join Skills USA as a business sponsor, so that way we could have students compete in business competitions at Skills USA. So we actually had a team for entrepreneurship at Skills USA that took home the gold, Leah Watson, Callie Pierce, Caitlin Farnsworth, and Zane McFadden. Three of the four of those are seniors, so they're not here. But then for DECA, we have, we took, I believe, thirty-three students to State this year. Just to kind of explain a little bit of our growth in the program, the spring, or right before COVID hit, we took six students to State, and this year, we took thirty-three. So I love the growth that we've done. A lot of it has to do with Jimbo Canada, who is one of our national qualifiers, and Faith Travis was one of the others in Sales Project and Hotel and Lodging Management Individual Series. So we had those two. We also had Leah Watson and Callie Pierce, again, from Skills. They also competed at the state level and the national level for DECA in Business Solutions Operations Research, and then Rayleigh Farmer and Ava Hodges, excuse me, competed in the Buying and Merchandising Event for the second year in a row at the international level. And then Ava was our CTE Student of the Year, so we're super proud of her at Walker Valley. So we've done a lot of things with DECA over the last couple of years, and it would not be possible without the support of the Board. So we really thank you guys so much for allowing us to grow and give our students these amazing opportunities.
I also wanted to say that Ava is a remarkable student. I want to brag on her presentation, and hopefully we can get a picture. But Ava, our CTE Student of the Year, has a thirty-four on her ACT, and has a 4.0, but she also, her parents, if you have not heard, her parents moved to Colorado, and she went to school there for four days and decided that business management and DECA, along with AP, was not the same in Colorado as it was here. The rigor wasn't the same, and she came back and spent her year here with her aunt and uncle while her parents were in Colorado, because of the programming that we have at Walker Valley. And so we're very proud of that. And so can we get, can we turn around and get a picture?
But may I interrupt for just a minute? Mr. Boe, can I brag on you for just a minute? So we had an impromptu student advisory with some of my juniors and seniors to talk about some things that had come up from everything, from advisory to cell phones, and he was at Walker Valley working with fifth graders. But just to tell you about the responsibility and how seriously they take what they do for us and give our advice, he emailed me to apologize for missing it and asked me what was said and gave me feedback on where we were and what we did, and I sent that to my team. So I just want to shout out, the majority of the kids you see in front of you are that type of kid, the responsibility that have, and to, for me to know that, for them to know that I really do value their feedback, it gave me the opportunity to tell everybody, hey, look what my kid did, because I claim you, you know, just that claim. And I've got another student advisory, and she's awesome, and we just wanted, I just wanted to point that out, that that's the quality of students that we have in Bradley County, and you in particular, I just wanted to say thank you. I was so proud of you. I just, thank you.
Okay, can we get, if you guys will come around, that's why we want to get one big picture, and then we'll, we'll have to hurry though. Yeah. We're going to try to stand up like we did last night. I'm just like, they need to come in. You guys go ahead.
We're back here. We're good. We're good. We're good. I mean, we can go around if y'all want to. I mean, we can go around if y'all want to.
All right, the next item on our agenda is item number 11. The ends, Mr. Chuck Kaywood? Or Chuck McKay? Sorry. We'll start with the Charleston Windows.
Good evening, Board. We had, oh, I think, five companies attend that bid. Only three bid. One company did not fill out the forms correctly on the Internet. We've talked, I'm going to bring, I'm going to bring bid sheets to, from all, for all the new bids in the up and coming, because this, one of the companies was non-compliant. We would recommend H&amp;L Management Services at $254,653 for the, replace the windows on front of Charleston Elementary.
Is there any questions for Mr. McKay?
Was that the lowest bid?
That was. Yes, yes. The next bidder up was $292,000.
Have you seen any of their worth? Or know anybody?
Both of these are companies that have done, both of those two bidders have done workforce in the past, yes.
Okay. Are there any more questions for Mr. McKay?
I would just like to make a comment, Mr. McKay. I'm going to say that I really, as a board member, I really appreciate you going out and obtaining these bids. You guys were very proactive in this. I think you brought in some very competitive bids, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and your department put into this, so thank you.
No problem. It's a pleasure.
Are there any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the H&amp;L Management Services bid on the Charleston Windows?
I make a motion.
I've got a motion by Dr. Lovinggood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Ms. Beatty. Are there any more discussions? Miranda, will you please call it off?
Yes, Ms. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Dr. Lovegood?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no motion passes.
Next item is the Taylor IDI Bathroom.
There again, we had four or five companies come out, but only two companies bid. You know, we have them all meet for a pre-construction meeting, so they all hear the same questions and the same answers, you know? And the company we're recommending is Skilled Services. Their bid came in at 400, I'm sorry, $44,800, and the, the next, next higher bid was $49,968. So, we're asking you would approve Skilled Services Construction. They've done a lot of workforce in the past, too.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McKay?
Can I ask one question, Mr. McKay?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your due diligence.
No problem. I'm a taxpayer, too.
Yes, sir, I got you. Why do you feel like the two or three other companies did not make a bid?
We were dealing with last year's money. We're pushing them to do this within a month, you know? So, you know, we want to get this done before summertime is over with, you know? And we're telling them when and where to start, so our next, next year's work will be a lot easier. We're just trying to, this is last year's money that needs to be done off our books by July 4th.
June 30.
Yeah, June 30th, yeah.
Ms. Susan would appreciate it.
So.
All right, if there are any more questions, do I have a motion to approve the bid from Skilled Services Quality Construction?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid for the Taylor ADA Bathroom.
Got a motion by Mr. Taylor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes. Got two seconds. Are there any more discussions? If not, Miranda, will you please call it off?
Yes. Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Dr. Lovegood?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is the Walker Valley High School Monument LED Sign.
The lowest bid was Ortwell Sign Company. I personally talked to them. May 2nd, it was there when I spoke to, their bid was $64,078.74. They are, yes, they are $900. There is a lowest bidder, but Ortwin gives a seven-year warranty compared to a five-year warranty, and they also can do the job within 10 to 12 weeks compared to the lower bidder, only gives a five-year warranty, and won't complete the job 16 to 18 weeks. So, that's why I'm recommending Ortwin Sign Company.
Okay. Are there any more, are there any questions for Mr. McKay? If not, do I have a motion to approve the bid from Ortwin Sign Company?
Make a motion to approve the Walker Valley High School Monument LED Sign Bid.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Are there any more discussions? If not, Miranda, will you please call it off?
And Dr. Lovegood?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. McKay.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is the Pi Center Change Order, Mr. Corbett Drew.
Good evening. Asking for four items tonight for the Pi Center. The medium-heavy truck technology, adding circuits, and retractable lights, six lights that can be, that will retract up into the ceiling, and they can pull over into the engine base and work on those. Those total 1,893 lights and circuits total 1,893. Some brick repair, we would build, we would seek to, this is a time and materials line out for 9,500. The hope is we don't spend that. We're looking for some ways to draw that back. But originally, we went through and did the structural repairs to the brick and re-pointed the brick. Now that we're finished, there were places where old pipe penetrations, where wall pack lights came off, different things where, this is really an aesthetic fix to several areas of brick. We're going to try to coordinate it and bring that cost down with some other work that's going on. The third item is signage changes with Bakker making the donation and us rebranding the conclave as Bakker Commons. We have some signage to fix or change. $13,182 will replace the pylon signs, the interior, and the monument sign out at the street. And then, the last item, when Just Love Coffee took the corner space, they didn't want to take the entirety of that corner space, so we subdivided that corner space, and, and so now, Just Love Coffee is soon to open. Their signage went up this past year, which is really good. But the, the remaining space, the smaller space, it's about, I think, 1,200 square feet that's left, is a future, the idea is it's a future restaurant that would, that would be right next to Just Love Coffee. But the air condition, the smaller air conditioner, the smaller rooftop unit is over the larger space, so this would relocate that so that the new tenant on the smaller space doesn't have to touch our equipment, and it preserves warranty, so that, to relocate that rooftop unit would be $12,218. Any questions?
Is this maybe we have come up with, or are we saving it as?
This is, this is still within the allocated budget.
That's what I'm, that's what I need to know.
Right. Are there any more questions for Mr. Drew? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Pi Change Order?
I make a motion to approve the Pi Change Order.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I've got a second by Ms. Goins. Are there any more discussions? If not, Miranda, will you please call it off?
Ms. Bryson? Ms. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Lovegood?
Yes.
Ms. Goins?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero, no motion passes.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is announcements. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is Thursday, June 8th. Are there any agenda items to be added for the next board meeting?
Madam Chair, I don't have an agenda item, but I do, would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to Danielle Seals for the Best Partner Breakfast this morning. She worked with the Chamber, putting together some partnership with his business here in our community, and putting that together with our schools, and so, thank you, Danielle, for all your hard work, and we really appreciate it. That breakfast was wonderful, to hear all the good things that's, that's taken place across over there, so thank you.
Any, any other announcements or agenda items?
I did think, I thought it was, I thought both graduations were great. I thought both Walker Valley and Bradley's graduations, one is to do it that quickly, if you will. I didn't want to rush it, but it was awesome to the point, it was a great experience, and what great evenings we had. It was awesome.
All right, if nothing else, we're done.